Good evening, we're going to call the meeting to order. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you, and now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a draft agenda in front of us, can I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Kelly, in support?
Support.
Jake, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That's everybody, thank you. Up first is recognition, Dr. Matthews.
We have our middle school students of the month that we would like to recognize, and so our teachers and our administrators at the middle school level, they collect names of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders that our staff would like to recognize, and tonight we'd like to read their names so that they can get some of their recognition. At the building level, they will receive some recognition from the principal, a certificate, so that they will understand that their efforts have been recognized by the staff and the administration at the building level. So, from east middle school, we have two sixth graders, Luke and Roxanne, and then two seventh graders, Claim and Elise, and two eighth graders, Jose and Bridgette. And at north, we have sixth graders Ella and Roman, seventh graders Lucy and Grady, and eighth graders Grayson and Olivia. And as I said, at the building level, these students will be recognized by their administrators, given a certificate, and they will have a conversation with their administrator about what this recognition means for them at the building level.
Thank you for that, and we'll do a round of applause. Congrats. Very good, okay, we're moving to our consent agenda items. We have presentation of bills and the amount of sixteen point three million, approval of our minutes from November tenth and November eighteenth, winter two coaches, boys' basketball donation in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, and approval of our January twelfth, twenty twenty-six regular meeting date. Can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda? Andrea, in support?
Support.
Kristi, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Can we get discussion for this?
Not consent agenda, but, so we've approved consent agenda, I think you have a question? I think I know what it is, go ahead and ask.
I just wanted to make sure that we gave some rationale for why we were only approving one meeting date for next year.
Yeah, a good idea, I appreciate that. So, we have been asked to consider changes to the board meeting schedule, and if tonight we were approving all of twenty twenty-six without any changes, we certainly could have done that, but because we've been asked to consider some changes to the schedule, we did not really have time to prepare to do that tonight. We've been very focused on the superintendent annual evaluation, which we'll report out on here shortly, and so the intent here was to just set us up with a January meeting. We will have a January agenda item where we'll discuss potential changes to our schedule for the remainder of twenty twenty-six.
After policy meets. After policy meets on December twelfth.
Yes, but I don't think policy's taking up this issue.
Okay.
So, but that's why, thank you Tricia for pointing out. Okay, new business item one, district transportation video monitoring system bid.
And we will turn to Allison Clements.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. I'd like to invite Chris Mezer up from Communication by Design to discuss the bid results, and as he does so, what I bring to you this evening for consideration is the changes of a video monitoring system to equip our newest bus purchase with the video system that we went out to bid for.
Yep. This was a request done on October twentieth for seven buses, outfitting those seven buses with video surveillance camera system. It is the same system that you are using throughout the rest of your fleet as well. We previously did this not too long ago, pre, I think, summer, summertime-ish. That went out, there was a pre-bid meeting following that, we had questions available for contractors to ask during that time, and then public bid opening on November tenth as well. We had two contractors respond to that, not a huge turnout, but when it's more of a narrow, confined system that you already use, we kind of get a narrow scope from contractors, so... But it was good to see a competitive number that was really close to Angel Tracks, the system that you currently use. They provided a number of eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. That is the exact same price that you guys received previously on your previous RFPs of seven buses, so we know that they were sticking tight to their number on that. Yep, that is for the materials of the cameras, cameras, cabling, Rockford Public Schools, save some money by installing those themselves as well.
Good, thank you, Chris. So, the recommendation this evening is to approve the purchase of the video transportation system using Angel Tracks for eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents to be paid for out of proceeds from the 2019 bond.
And this system is the system we currently have?
Yes, it is.
Within our buses?
Correct, it's the system we currently have, and this project and bid were both brought to the December Finance Committee meeting as well.
Okay, a motion to approve recommendation?
Motion.
Kristi, support?
Support.
Jake, any discussion?
I would just, so on the Finance Committee, I would just like to give a shout out to our mechanic crew, they save us thousands of dollars by being able to install this on their own, so that's pretty cool.
Great, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's everybody, thank you. Up next, bleachers and elevator.
And this is back to Ms. Clements.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. I'd like to invite Sean Gordon, our Director of Operations, and Jared Gaus from Owen Ames Kimball, our Construction Manager, to come up to the podium, and while they do so, I'd like to share with you that this concept was brought to both the September Building in Site and October Finance Committee, and then to the December Finance Committee with bid results for the replacement of the bleachers at the Rockford High School Gymnasium, as well as the elevator that is in the athletics area. And this is important because both of these, the bleachers and that elevator, are original to the building, so they're over thirty years old at this point. They last very long, we're very pleased with that, but it's time, they are coming to the point where they're at the end of their useful life, and we need to replace them so that they can maintain safe standards for our students and staff and community members, and the replacement will also bring the bleachers into compliance with ADA standards, current ADA standards, which is important. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jared and Sean.
Yeah, appreciate that, yeah, so as Allison said, upgrading the bleachers to the gym and the elevator in the athletic wing there. We took bids on October sixteenth for this project, we had seven bid categories, we had good coverage across all bid categories. We had metals bid category, went to rail components, which has been a contract we've worked in the district before, and does a lot of work around West Michigan area and a lot of similar projects. They're doing the modifications of the handrails at the upper track area there, so with that, we will have some painting involved as well with those handrail areas, and that's K&amp;A painting, that was bid category number two. The next big category was the wood athletic flooring, so we're replacing the whole gym flooring there, and that's got a floor care concepts right there on that one, and they also maintain all the gym floors in the district as well, so that was a good hit there. And then, gymnasium equipment was Bearman Associates, we replaced the divider curtain on that project, they were, they came in for us on that one, and then the meat of the project, the bleachers, was InraCal Bleachers came in with that one, and then next is, what was the next one? Sorry, electrical, am I there?
Elevator. Elevator and then electric.
Elevator, yes, thank you, appreciate that. So, elevator was Kone for the replacement of that elevator, they service all the elevators in the district as well, and then electrical, Grand Valley Electrical, who is a West Michigan contractor, has done projects very similar to this on other projects in West Michigan, so we did carry a couple allowances on this one, to carry, we had some dead floor spots in the gym that was discovered during the bidding process, so to capture, kind of repairing those dead floors, the dead spots in the floor, so that's there to address that. We're also carrying allowance to cover logistics, floor protection, lifts that are going to be in that gym, to kind of protect the floor there as it is, we don't create any more damage to it, so, yeah, so we got some allowances carried in that. So, all in all, great bids, great coverage, I think about a hundred and twelve K on this one, so really happy with the results.
Thanks, Jared, and then Sean, if you want to talk a little bit about the gym flooring and the replacement with that?
Sure, yep. It's actually not the entire gym floor replacement, it's underneath the bleachers right now, where they have sat for the last thirty years, it has really warped the floor, so we'll be removing some of the flooring underneath the bleachers, and shoring that up with a little bit more under supports, and then replacing that. And when they do that, they have to tooth it in, so it will change the color on the ends and the sides. In order to get that to blend, we need to sand it down, and then we'll put a new floor finish on at that time, and it also allows us to fix the dead spots that Jared was talking about at the same time, so.
So, when the project is done, there'll be a consistent floor finish despite some of the repair work that, the replacement components underneath the existing bleachers where it's been bowling. Okay, thank you both. So, this bid was presented to Finance Committee in December, the total bid for the bleachers and the elevator replacement came in at one million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and eight dollars, and the recommendation this evening to the board is to approve the project with funds from Sinking Fund, and that is the recommendation.
Thank you, motion to approve?
I motion.
Kelly, in support?
Support.
Tricia, any other questions?
I just wanted to ask Allison to talk a little bit about students jumping up and down on bleachers, Leah.
So, we have a wonderful student section that turns out for our sporting events, basketball in particular, and we've had wonderful success with our girls' basketball program and our boys' basketball program does a great job as well, and as part of that, our students get excited and want to cheer on in the most enthusiastic way, which sometimes often actually involves jumping on the bleachers, which causes them to wear down quite a bit, and so that was a large factor in considering this bleacher replacement and the structure behind the bleacher support.
Thank you.
So, Sean, we believe this system that we're investing in is strong enough to support our student section.
It is strong enough to support, they do not recommend jumping on them, but yes, it is strong enough to support them.
Good, thank you for that, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That's everybody, thank you. Boilers are up next.
And this will be back to Ms. Clements, I'm assuming the two gentlemen at the podium as well.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Matthews, yes, I have invited them to stay for discussion on the Rockford High School boiler replacement. This concept was also brought to the September Building in Site and October Finance Committee, and then the bid results brought to the December Finance Committee meeting, and this is for the replacement of our larger boilers with three smaller, more efficient boilers with room for a fourth boiler if the building in the future needs another boiler system for any possible expansion or that sort of thing, so preparing for the future to make sure that there is space if needed at some point in time. And so this supports our Ramswell filler five C1, planning for the future, which is prioritizing current and future district needs. I'll turn it over to Jared and Sean to kind of talk a little bit more about this project and also the bid results.
Yeah, I'll let Sean handle the boiler, he loves boilers, so I'll go over the bids and all that stuff, if you can chime in on that. So, yeah, we took bids October sixteenth, the same time as the same day we took the bleacher elevator bids. Again, great coverage on all the bid categories, five bid categories on this one. We had general trades, which kind of did all the incidental stuff, kind of had to package a lot of little stuff into one package, so we had some concrete, steel, some demo, their caption, all that, then went to Vander Cody. Mechanical plumbing, which is the meat of the project, went to A&amp;B Mechanical, they've been on a lot of projects in the district, and we had a lot of bidders for that category as well, so we're happy with those results. A&amp;B Mechanical got that. Fire protection went to Blaze Fire Protection, that's for relocating the pump, which you see an alternate there. They actually gave a voluntary alternate to kind of save the district quite a bit of money with that relocation, and what didn't, we still are doing it, but not as extensive as what the plans originally called for. Still will be able to get the boilers out and move forward, so that was a nice cost savings there that they brought to the table that we took. DDC Controls is Control Net, and then electrical is Grand Valley Electrical, nice with that one, that they came in on good costs on this one, because they also have the bleacher project, so it'll be nice to have them in-house, we're doing both these projects this summer, so kind of makes logistics nice for that big category as well. A couple alternates with this one, because the budget came in so good with this one, we're looking at those alternates, and doing the hot water, the hot water heating system as well, the domestic hot water system is getting an upgrade as well for this one, and all in all, set in, I think we're almost five hundred, ten hundred budget on this one, so really good numbers on this one.
Okay, just sure about the boilers?
We love them.
We're getting rid of the Johnson boilers that are all steam, and so we convert from steam to hot water for the building. Going forward, it's going to be all hot water, so we're going to have a considerable amount of savings for energy purposes, because we're not doing that extra conversion. So, that's going to help us out, and then also with our domestic hot water heater, having that replaced, it'll be energy efficiency there as well. So, we're about eighty percent efficient right now with the steam boilers, will be ninety plus with the new boilers, so.
So, Sean, where are the boilers located at the high school?
In the boiler room.
Yeah, thank you.
Right next to the, right next to the gym and the boys' locker room.
Okay, and so, when will this project commence?
We will be starting that project as soon as we shut the boilers down for the season, which will let us get a jump start with the contractors to be in the buildings early, because in the summertime, we have that big push of all the, all the schools are looking for that work, so it'll be good to get a jump start on it as soon as the heating season is done. So, just depends on our weather, we could be starting in April, it may be June, just all depends, so.
So, the recommendation this evening is for the board to approve the bid package for the boiler replacement project at one million, five hundred and ten thousand, one million, five hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars to be funded with proceeds from the 2019 bond.
Chris, to move, in support? Andrea, any other questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for educating me on boilers at Building in Site, and I admire your passion for them. It's, no, it's been really interesting, those things, it's massive, I don't think it's possible to really understand the scale of it really until we start looking at physically how big this is, so, thank you.
Thanks, guys. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's everybody. On to reports, up first, our student representative, Leah, you're up.
Can I get this real slideshow one? Do a PowerPoint. All right. So, we had a good fun since the last board meeting, we've had a lot going on. First thing, and this is like really important for our student council, we work really hard at this, we do winter wishes, so every student and staff member is gifted a wish, and they are able to wish for like a want or a need for someone else in the building, and this year we had a hundred and forty-seven total wishes, which is a bit lower than normal, so that wasn't the best, but it's still good that we got wishes at all. So, we had eighteen needs, which is kind of what we try to focus on the most, but students aren't always as excited to wish needs for others as they are to wish like a Taco Bell gift card to their friend. But, we had eighteen, so those consisted of like many different things, a lot of them were clothes, or gift cards for gas, or groceries for a family, and the past we've had like needs as tires, once braces, or glasses, and things like that, but we didn't see much of that this year, like not a ton of huge wishes like that, but those are going to be granted in December, so we've ordered all of those from Amazon, or maybe all those places, and we'll be wrapping those with Christmas wrapping paper, and delivering those before break, and then our other items like flowers, clothes that weren't needs, and like miscellaneous items, toys, lots of Legos, food, technology, which are a bit extravagant, so we don't always grant those, but, and gift cards, so we have all of those, and those will be granted in February, so we work really hard then to kind of finish off all the fun wishes, and get all those done, and then we also have teachers have the ability, the ability to wish things for students, because sometimes students don't know like what their peers need, because we're not always super open about that, but teachers a lot of times have like a good amount of knowledge on that, so they're able to do extra wishes as well. And then next up, we decorated for the holidays, here's a few pictures, we always color on those windows right there with, I don't know what kind of markers, but.
I totally get it, window markers.
Yeah, yeah, and then we covered the railings in lights and tinsel, and we have trees around the school and other sorts of decorations, and then we also did appreciation this, in November, for the counselors, the athletic office, and adminis, oh my goodness, administrators, and so for the counselors, we got, actually we did the same for everyone, we got little gift bags for them, and then for some teachers, we did bouquets of flowers, and then for others, I think we did bouquets of beef jerky, so we got like beef jerky flowers, which was really fun, and they enjoyed that, and we got them different types of drinks and snacks just for them to kind of like see that they mean a lot to us. And then we also had Les Mis auditions, and the cast is out, and rehearsals have started for that, it's really fun, I know lots of students are super excited for this musical, and, I think it's a musical, and I can't wait to go see it, actually, I'm really excited. And then, we are also having a dodgeball tournament next week, so we're excited to try to get students involved in more ways after school, so students get to participate, and staff will ref, and our winners will receive gift cards, which is definitely some motivation for a lot of our students. And then, we also, I'm going to try to start doing club spotlights, because Brooklyn was really great about that last year, and I think it's really important. So, this meeting, I'm going to look at the Future Medical Leaders Club, which is, I think it's a super cool group, they work on hands-on tasks mostly, so they have meetings, I think Thursdays after school, they practice suturing, they watch like video tutorials, and they'll practice it on, like as you can see right here, fake limbs, and they practice drawing blood as well.
Let's see, clarify.
I was really glad they are not suturing each other.
Me too.
They're not joining our training staff and patching kids up on the sidelines.
That would be a bit, yes, yes, so that's super cool, I know they're all super into that, and they have a lot of fun. They also, these pictures with the Grand Valley table, they had, it was at steam night, they went and they brought, they got donations of stuffed animals, and then they kind of, it was kind of like helping kids get over fear of the doctor, so kids got to listen to the animal's heartbeats with like a stethoscope, and take blood pressure and things like that, and then they also sometimes have professionals from the medical field come in, so I know they had a GVSU professor and a PA both came in to talk to them about kind of just what they do in their lives and how they can have advice from the medical field. And then, we are doing Staff Spirit Month for December, so this is a great way to get staff involved, and they get to wear a little bit more comfy clothes for this month of December, and every day they participate, they get a raffle ticket, and then we raffle off gift cards for them, which is really fun. My personal favorite is coming up on Wednesday, we've never done this before, we're doing Dress Like a Student Day, and so we've seen this online, and we thought it's going to be really fun, they'll most likely mostly be in sweats, but I think it'll be interesting, and I'm really excited to see what teachers come up with, and students don't know about this, so like, they'll be walking into school and it'll be like a fun surprise to kind of just like make their day.
Can we get some pictures of that?
Yes, definitely be pictures.
I expect the Instagram to be fully updated.
Yes, totally. And then, this is our last thing, Wednesday this week, we have another fundraiser for our senior after-grad party at Bucci Bar, so ten percent of all profits made that day will go to our senior after-grad party, so be sure to go get a good meal at Bucci Bar this week.
All right, other question? I saw around Thanksgiving that there was an opportunity for students to write a note in the library about like gratitude for teachers and administrators and win a pie?
Yes, yes, it was very fun. I, we had a very busy time in student council as well, but that was actually run by the librarians, I think, so that was like amazing that they did that themselves, and we went down there actually too, and we wrote notes of gratitude to teachers and staff members, it was super fun. I don't know who won the pie, but I thought that was like a really creative idea.
Very kudos to the library.
Yes, definitely.
And you guys had enough in budget to meet all of your meet winter wish items?
Yes, we do, we use the money we make from the senior parking lot, so that is where we usually get the money for winter wishes. Very good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks Leah. Okay, up next is committee reports, we had at least a couple of those, I think, finance, HR, any highlights that we haven't covered already?
Yeah, I can, oh, go ahead, go for it.
We covered human resources tonight.
We sure did.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Finance, I think we hit a lot of the things, a couple of things that were not on the list, but were in the minutes for the board pack, and we'll hear more about coming up, are the, there's going to be a bond refunding opportunity, so keep your eyes open for that one, that's a good, good way to save, save dollars, I think we've saved over twenty-seven million in the past by doing this, so it's, it's pretty significant. Non-homestead mileage renewal, that's going to be coming up, that's a great one in that it puts money in the classrooms, and, and is really for second homes and businesses, so not your primary residence, which is, which is nice. Audit, the audit took place, and we've got the, the shining notification of unmodified, which sounds really boring, but is really, really good, it means that the auditors have gone through and found nothing to, to adjust, so it was a clean, clean report, which is a lot of work on you and your team. And then the last kind of item, non-item, was when the agenda was, just for transparency sake, when the agenda was created, there was a, we had a paving bid on there, but since the bond didn't pass, that got pulled, so we were going to look at paving Crestwood and, part of Crestwood, and behind the high school, kind of leading up to the tennis courts and all that stuff, and cleaning that up, but, but that's not going to happen, instead we'll probably just kind of fill pop holes. So, that was originally on, but we took it off, so you wouldn't see that on your minutes, but letting you know, so.
I think it was in the minute, well, not all the detail, but it does say that it was removed.
It was removed.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, yeah.
Thanks Jake. Policy hasn't met, but you won't?
We have not, we are on the calendar, and we will have an update and full recommendation to the board at the January meeting.
January meeting, okay, so we'll look forward to the readout from Policy Committee on public comment and those topics.
Yes. Can I just chime in real quick?
Sure.
Kelly, you mentioned that we already covered the HR committee meeting, but I don't, I don't remember when we did that, we already did that in this meeting?
We did it in the last meeting, so when we met, when Kristi and I met with Cory last week, we covered the process for the superintendent evaluation that we just came out of.
Did you want to report out on any other stuff that was discussed at the meeting?
Cory?
Oh, I'm happy to give a report if you'd like. There were, I think, four topics on the agenda, the first one was around our medical insurance, which every year we get a renewal of our medical insurance. Our medical insurance increased by fifteen point six percent for a January first start, so that's a large renewal, it renewed at twelve percent last year, which was also a large renewal rate, and so we spent a lot of time talking about the state mandated hard caps for single, two-person, and full-family insurances, and this is the first time since I've been under Rockford Schools employ that our insurances are significantly above the hard cap because of those two big increases year over year, so for the first time in recent history, our staff will have to pay a premium share for their insurances. That's something that we've been working with our unions on, and of course, the hard cap is something that is a statutory requirement by the state of Michigan, so we just discussed that impact on, on our staff, and that that is something that is different, that we haven't experienced in the past. We also discussed the hiring processes, and we have an administrative hire coming up because we have a resignation from our food service director, who's retiring at the end of this school year, so in June, so this spring we'll engage in a hire for that. for that position. Um, we discussed uh, our bargaining TA that you all had approved in, I think, October. Um, part of that had a circuit breaker in it. And uh, that circuit breaker dealt with our final audited number for um, Allison's audit that's gonna come in January. And uh, based on the preliminary information from the auditing firm, that circuit breaker will trip, which means that we will work with our union. In fact, we've already had conversations with them about correcting some of the boxes in our salary grid that remain market low. So you know, we look at compensation in a lot of different ways, but one of the way we look at salary is how our individual boxes for different positions compare to those around the county. And so um, every year we try to get a little bit better. And um, when we settled, we were a little bit better. But we also said, if our bu- if our audit comes in better than anticipated, we're gonna come back and fix a few more boxes. And so we will do that. We will do that. Um, that won't actually take uh, im- that won't take uh, effect until the board receives the audit, but we're working preliminarily with the unions and we do have a tentative agreement on how that looks. And so we're excited um, about that because when our budget comes in better than anticipated, we can do good things, right? And so that's good. Um, and the last thing we did was talk about the superintendent evaluation.
And dental.
Oh, thank you. I saw you doing this. I didn't know what you were doing. You're trying to tell me to talk about teeth. Um, so uh, yes, let me just go back to dental. Um, about 18 months ago, our district switched our dental carrier from ADN, which was our previous carrier, to Blue Cross Blue Shield Dental. Um, when we did that, there was a nominal savings to the district and we thought we were doing something that would be positive. Um, and it wasn't. Uh, the staff experience with Blue Cross Blue Shield Dental for a lot of staff members um, was subpar to the experiences that we've had with other providers and certainly subpar to the experience that we had um, with ADN. And so after 18 months of trying to engage in, you know, problem solving and um, reconciliation around billing and network providers and tiered network providers with Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, we made a decision that we would move back to ADN, our previous carrier. Um, there will be a nominal cost, just like there was a nominal savings when we went to Blue Cross Blue Shield Dental. Uh, but the experience that um, our staff have overwhelmingly had um, with the way networks are administered um, in the blues compared to um, ADN is significantly impactful. And so we discussed that. And then the last thing we discussed is um, we prepared for the closed session that we um, had right before this meeting. So um, we talked about what we would need to do, what would need to be compiled, made sure that the board packet was um, ready to go with uh, all of the individual evaluators' information in it. And so we just did some of the planning and organizing around that. Thank you for that. You're welcome.
And I apologize for having forgot about the medical and dental update.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you. Uh, all right. I think we're on then to literacy report, item three.
And I will turn it over to Mr. Rand. Thank you, Dr. Matthews. And I'm gonna ask uh, the Director of Literacy and Federal Program and Sharon Wells to join me today. Um, and we'll take you through a few slides up here. Recently, well, I would, I would say, you know, uh, annually, we give student achievement updates in the fall and in the spring. And as you know, our literacy programming has gone through an overhaul. Um, this is the second year particularly at DK through five that we have a new curriculum. Six, eight has been uh, new for the past at least three years, depending on the grade. We've done some work at ninth grade, we've done some work for uh, at 10th grade, we've done some work at 11th grade. So really, all the way up DK through 11, we have really stood back, looked at the trends with our literacy programming and then made some adjustments. And so um, we typically, I would say, would give a report in the spring. However, there was some media coverage recently around our literacy programming and I thought this would be a good time to share an update. And if we, if you would like another one in the spring, we'd be happy to do that as well too. So um, looks like, am I gonna be okay here, Stephen, with that?
I don't know. I just noticed.
Okay.
The windows app, Zach, that's your location now.
Okay, let's try it. Not we'll be able to. So again, our, our, our goal here is to, uh, for Sharon and I, just to uh, give you a little bit of bigger picture, talk a little bit about some of the data and some of the uh, background for some of the decisions that we're making. First of all, in our district, um, no matter uh, what the content area and so forth, uh, we have been really living by some core values and collective commitments when it comes to teaching and learning. And so you might have seen some of these core values and collective commitments, but for the most part, well, as evidenced today, Cory and I led a meeting with principals. This is the first thing we started with. We talked about today, we're gonna uh, focus on the top collective commitment, which was taking collective responsibility for every single student. We're gonna ask for transparency and collaboration in our work that day. Those would be values that we looked at. Um, and we kinda anchor us in our work. So that, these absolutely are at kind of the top of our work when we think about um, teaching and learning and best practices. The second thing that we wanna make sure that we are being mindful of is when we make shifts, we do so not from our gut, but we do so on research based practices. So about 7,500 kids in the district, there's a lot of educational research out there that says what does work. We are gonna take piece by piece. And one of the ways in which we did some of this early work in our district was to follow the works of John Hattie. So John Hattie is an educational researcher. He has uh, uh, recent um, educational uh, findings that talk about a meta-analysis of educational practices that received the biggest effect. So this graph gives you a little bit of a snippet of this, just to kinda for effect, if you will. The hinge point that he talks about here is point four. At point four, if you do a practice with fidelity, it's essentially worth doing, okay? At a minus point four, it's really not time and effort and the learning that occurs because of it does not meet the standard. All right? So that's oversimplified. The book is dense, I encourage you, but that's kind of the gist, all right? So at the very top of the list are some of these big strategies or just kind of pieces like collective efficacy or collective teacher efficacy ranks at the top of his list. Collective teacher efficacy is not one thing, all right? It's culture, it's ownership of learning, it's knowledge about how you're committing to a team, it's reaching your goals, okay? It's making progress, it's, it's failing, it's repeating and making progress. It's many things like that. We ultimately in this district are chasing that. And I can promise you that efficacy is going up, especially as we have some increase in our student achievement numbers and people understand how they are contributing. We ultimately are doing that. But I bring it to your attention, another one um, here. This is this response to intervention. You'll see the bang for your buck there at 1.29. If this is implemented with fidelity, then according to this researcher, which is very well-known, it is a high-yield practice. And that's something that we actually do. And you'll see, again, my point though is, we technically kinda look at some of these pieces here and we say what works and then um, you know, that kind of helps it inform. The second foundational piece in our district is this professional learning community structure. This is the belief that we work in cycles of inquiry. We agree on what students should know, we assess them on what they know, we respond when they don't know, we focus on the learning needs of every single kid. This is foundational, no matter what content area. It's a big piece of how we um, focus on teaching and learning in our district. And then by content, we look at, there it is again, you haven't seen it for a couple of years, right? Guaranteed and viable curriculum. It is our belief that no matter what school or grade level, if it's across the grade levels or content area, like our students need to have equitable learning experiences regardless of the teacher or school that they're in. Sixth grade English or E-L-A should be the same at East as it is at North. Should be the same in Mrs. Smith's or Mr. Jones', all right? And so the, across, you know, biology or third grade across the district. So we made great work on aligning vertical teams and horizontal teams in our district to do the work together. So they teach the same content at roughly the same time. They focus on the same outcome priority, priority outcomes. They use similar larger assessments. They collaborate about student data and eventually, you know, students have the same experience. So it's not up to chance, all right? It's a system. And you can see, kinda that's what we're getting at. We'll talk a little bit about some of the literacy specific pieces.
Thanks, Mike. So we know that when uh, we are born, we are not able to read. And the science also tells us that you will not learn to read unless somebody teaches you. So when you have that brilliant little three-year-old that you're like, oh, they just did it, just all by themselves. They did not. Someone taught them, whether it was through sound symbol relationships or reading to them frequently and asking great questions, but they were taught. So what we've been doing in Rockford for the last five years is we've had a real focus on the science of reading. So the science of reading is a preponderance of evidence based on multiple researchers from all of the sciences, from educators and neuroscientists and biologists and medical doctors and psychiatrists. And they take all of that research and they say, this is how the brain learns to read. I'm a Director of Literacy. I've been doing this for a very long time. I have a master's in reading. No one taught me the science of reading. So Rockford Public Schools uh, embarked upon a journey with our staff at the elementary level to teach them what the science of reading says. And so we did book studies. We had professional development. We built a science of reading team and they took that information and they shared it with the staff. And what we learned from that was where we needed to build our literacy program so that we were meeting the needs of how kids learn to read. So the science of reading is not new. The science of reading is not a program. You can't buy it. I'd love to, but you cannot buy it. Um, it is something that you implement. It's knowledge. So we took that knowledge of the brain and we used that for all of our decision-making when we were building what curriculum resource we were going to use. You'll see what it is, you'll see what it is not. We also, as uh, Mike shared in that Hattie research, response to intervention, is a tiered approach where you do not, you, you have all students that are benchmark, uh, have a benchmark assessment three times a year to see where they may or may not have some literacy deficits and you respond. And we start that in kindergarten. You never use a wait-to-fail model in education, right? The research states, if you don't learn to read by grade three, we've had these conversations before, the state of Michigan wrote a whole law about this, it's called the third grade reading law, um, that they will have complications when it comes to employment. They will struggle with learning, so you have to start early. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go. So this is what Rockford did as far as building that curriculum timeline. Uh, we had a Mesa program, which was through the university or Oakland University. It was a state um, created curriculum based on Michigan standards and it was the best we had at the time. But when this team was formed and we did our work, we found a significant deficit in one of the five pillars of reading. And that was in the area of phonics, which is directly uh, correlated with the science of reading. So we did not decide, we decided we're not gonna wait um, until we have time to adopt a whole new curriculum. We're gonna fill that gap immediately. And we adopted a phonics program and a morphology program for upper elementary um, right away. And then we took the next year to do significant research on what curriculum would be out there that meets the needs of all five pillars of all students and is rooted in the science of reading. And that is when we adopted CKLA, which stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts. And we implemented that last year for the first year. We are now in our second year with significant professional development support, conversations, instructional coach modeling, um, and really being side by side with our teachers. So along with a curriculum, which remember is just a resource, it's a tool, we also have to have a process because we know that all students do not learn how to read easily. In fact, only 5% of students learn to read um, based on any teacher in any curriculum. 5%. So we have to have a plan for those kids who need more intensive and in um, specific reading skill-based work. So what we do in Rockford is three times a year, we um, are giving a benchmark assessment, the NWA, to all kids. And that's kind of our screener. And we take that and then we dig deeper with maybe about a third of the kids, where we say, you know what, there's something here, we have to figure out what, did they have a bad testing day, but they're really okay? Or do we have to dig deeper and find that skill level that they might have a deficit in that we can help them with? So we do a secondary assessment and we take those students and we make sure that they have an intensive, rigorous um, intervention every single day outside of their reading block. So tier one is all kids, that's CKLA, it's grade level material. Tier two is the students that may not get the grade level material. This is what we do during our PLC work. We collaborate, we talk, we say, what are the needs of the students in front of me? They need to know grade level material. And we intervene upon that during our flex time. But tier three is different. Tier three says, I'm a student who is six months, a year, two years behind my peers at a skill level that they have to have or they're not going to grow. So we take those students and they go out four to five days a week for 30 to 40 minutes, depending on what grade they're in. And we use in um, research-based interventions that are approved, have been vetted through the district by our reading interventionists and research room teachers. Those students are progress monitored every single week. So we have data on them every week. Every single month, a team of people at the elementary schools called, we call them cat teams and you don't have to me out, I mean, I've had it before. It's collaborative action team. And they talk about those students every month. And they look at those progress lines and say, do we need to change anything? Are they, are they ready to exit because the intervention worked? What do we need to do to support those students? You can't fall through the cracks when we're doing this three times a year on all kids. And new students, you say, what if a kid moves in in October? Every teacher in our district has the right to go through a process where they recommend a student outside of that window. So we even have that built in. This is just a little snapshot of some data from the last six years for tier three. Remember, these are the kids who are significantly behind. You want this to be around 5, 6, 7% is kind of the average for all MTSS systems for tier three. That could be behavior, math, reading, doesn't matter. So if you look back in October of 20, remember, we didn't have school the first three weeks in person that year. So that's why it's October, not September. Um, we were in the eights and nines at the elementary level. We are now uh, right around 6% in the fall. And then you can see also uh, in November, we used to be around 6 or 7, and now we're right around 5. The middle schools hover at 3 at the beginning of the year and by fall, you'll even see a zero up there. That doesn't mean zero, Steve, but it means less than 1%. So they're, they might have only a handful. So what this tells you is that not only are we improving our intervention, it's working. And our percentages far surpass national averages when it comes to that tier three level. Um, we also know that we are capturing the students at the earliest of ages. Rockford Public Schools has a complete RTI process. Kindergarten through this year, we added ninth grade.
So what does that mean? You know, you see some of the beliefs uh, that are foundational, the research that goes into choosing curriculum, the professional learning, the support that is there. And then we look at, one measure of success is student achievement. And so some familiar slides from the fall, but again, three different types. You hear, you, you know, NWA is that benchmark assessment for three times a year. We use it as a screener for specifically reading. College Board is uh, eight through 11 and then M-Step is kinda that holistic type of uh, test, if you will. Um, that's English Language Arts. So we'll look at some data quickly again here. This is this fall uh, from our NWA data. This is reading specific by grade level. So remember, when we talk about percentile, we are being compared to any student that takes the assessment in the nation. And NWA is a nationwide assessment. So percentile is if you are the ninth, uh, 90th percentile, right? You're the 90th person in line. Uh, you know, 10 away from the top, if you will, right? And so um, you can see that that is about where we are at for the most part as a general rule. Um, and you know, those as a, and also have been, uh, if you look over time, what's important is is our system working. And over time, you can see those percentiles have been increasing. And so high achievement and also continued growth. Now, we're a large system, so we have lots of students that take the assessments. Um, so in order to move some points, right? You, uh, there's a large population of students that move. So we all, we always think about how, you know, what categories those students fall in. I'll show you a little bit later how teachers even use this data um, to program for individual kids. I talked about the M-Step again. The M-Step is the state assessment. It's an E-L-A assessment, all right? So it has four components to it, reading, writing, speaking and listening language. So this is the big one. There's, those are the four main kind of standards. So M-Step does not say, can a student read or not? If, okay, this is a, it's kind of a, you know, a, a larger picture when it comes to English Language Arts. So you see our proficiency here. Again, trend-wise, you know, is our system in, uh, working? You can see an overall trend line, as shared with you earlier this year, that our system is working. And so there certainly are years where there And so there certainly are years where there might be a dip or a higher increase. But when you add it up, our system is overall working. And we actually, if you take all these numbers, you put them together every year by year by year, we're always in the black. There's always percentages for, as much as 16 points when you add, um, most recently. So again, another piece of data, we can take this by billing and, but if we look at just kind of the entire system and what its output is, I'm hoping to share that with you. So how does that then compare against other states or other schools in the state? This is the PSAT. This is eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, and then the SAT is in 11th grade. I just gave you some comparison data. You know, what it says is 82% of our students in 11th grade are proficient on the SAT, English or evidence-based reading and writing portion. And so that's a very high number. And then that actually stacks up very high against other schools of people too. That's just not a competition, but it's more of a benchmark and understanding, right? And so are our programs working? It shows that there is great evidence to suggest that they are. This is another way about to look at a two-year trend. So our, our program's showing improvement. And you're not going to see in a district where, you know, five or five to 600 kids testing, a 20% swing. It's just not going to happen. There's too many kids. But we're looking for that incremental growth, right? And that incremental growth in our indicators are continuing to show. So when we think about, what is this data mean? That's great, bring it to the board and the buildings and so forth. But the point is, when we go back to our collective commitments, we're thinking about how do individual kids learn? And then how do we program for all? So when we think about how this data is used in our district so that we pivot instruction, I just wanted to bring in one piece for you. So this is a Fall Tier One Action Planning Guide. We do this in the fall and we do this in the winter. We start with NWEA data in the fall. This is, uh, this would be by building. And in these instances, by elementary DK through five and then middle school all the way up to ninth grade, I should say, we do the Tier One Action Planning meetings. The students take a screener benchmark and then the fourth grade at Valley View Elementary sits at a table. They look at the individual kids at fourth grade. They think about what are the trends? And then what are, how can they make some plans that will be, uh, that will happen between, say, the beginning of October, by these are done through the end of January. And the end of January, they come back again. They have the benchmark. They look at the names. They look at the content areas. They make individual specific plans for them. So then they're, oh, we talk about the teacher teams that are in the buildings. Then the teacher teams take their students, right? And so in this instance, you see a third grade team. This third grade team here has said, there's 56 of their students there, right? So, or 71%, I should say, the Spring 25 State Assessment Proficiency. So that's 40 of their 56. They look, they, um, they can then, what they do is they will take the names of students, which aren't yet put on here, right? And they will have groupings for these students by their proficiency level or strength in certain NWA, and they target individual attention for them. We track this fall, winter, and spring and adjust each time. So we take that big macro data and bring it down to the individual kid sitting in a desk that the teacher knows. And then we also layer it with NWA and as Sharon said specifically around reading, DIBELS data as well too.
So in addition to planning as a team with your Tier One Action Planning meetings and planning as a building, which we do at the district level, we have so many other supports in place. And you know, I could talk about these for hours, but I won't. But just to give you a little snapshot, we have a reading RTI task force in Rockford that has almost 20 educators on it. We meet twice a year as a whole, but then we have subgroups within that committee and that is always moving the RTI engine forward. We are evaluating current research. We are looking at our percentages. We are seeing how we can get better. We have 10 instructional coaches in Rockford. All of them have strong literacy backgrounds. We have interventionists. In this district, we have between 25 and 30 interventionists and the majority of them are in reading. Rockford does not have to do this, but we prefer certified teachers to be in those roles, supported by our HR department, and we have a unique structure for their pay in order to maintain their employment here. K9 RTI process, we talked about, we have a new, newly formed dyslexia task force. The third grade reading law in Michigan has been changed. One year ago, Governor Whitner, Whip, oh my gosh, Whitmer, don't let her hear me say that. She signed into law, the dyslexia law. It is not a new law. Actually, it's the third grade reading law adapted and modified to meet the needs of our students with dyslexia. And so we are working as a district to go side by side with the state and at the county level to implement this law, which is going to be fully implemented in 2027, 28 school year. And finally, we have a system of intensive systematic interventions for all students that need it.
I'm really proud of our district just in general for how we are pivoting with interventions and extensions for kids. That's an area that we're making great pride in or great growth in and a lot of pride. Just quickly here as we round out, as you can see, though, we have a literacy program, right? And it's a system. And each year we build layers onto the system and then also it is producing results. And so we're proud of that system. And you know, we do, we're most concerned about, obviously, students that are learning and how we can track it and then pivot and respond. With that said, there are some other things that, you know, some people have reached out to us and said, listen, Rockford, you're doing a great job and that is good to hear as well, right? And so I wanted to bring that on your behalf. Some of these you may have seen. And Bridge Magazine last winter reached out to us. They did a trend about schools that are kind of bucking the trend since COVID. And they named Rockford Public Schools in going into the Michigan database and said, your student achievement in literacy is bucking the trend. What are you doing? Meadowridge Elementary last year was recognized as a blue ribbon, national blue ribbon school because they had closed the achievement gap. And again, outperformed schools with students and demographics that would be similar. And then last year, Rockford Public Schools was nominated in the state of Michigan or recognized in the state of Michigan as a top 10 district as far as overall student achievement. All of the assessments, all subject areas that are tested by M-Step and PSAT. And so that was great recognition of the work that we continue to do too. So we want to not rest on this, okay? And this is big. But on the other hand, it's some of those other pieces that we also use to motivate and recognize with our staff. You should be proud too. And I know we brought pieces to you that you've supported and hopefully you feel like there's some results that are coming out of that.
And we can't help but be so grateful for being surrounded with a community that supports literacy. So we just listed a few things here. A Rockford book bus serves thousands and thousands of students all summer long. Definitely the most popular vehicle in our area. We have the Reading Rocks Festival, which is typically the last weekend in May or the first weekend in June that we support. Rockford financially supported the daily partner imagination library for several years when we had additional COVID funding. We have an incredible Rockford Education Foundation. And one of their many pillars of support includes literacy. So we see a lot of grants come our way with that. And then of course, the Cross Library, we have partnerships with them and are just so grateful for what they do for our community of readers as well. So we leave you with this quote and I'm sure Michael will wrap it up.
Well, in the end, I think, you know, we want you to see that the literacy program's on a path. We've, we implemented a big change DK through five. Our teachers were phenomenal about kind, you know, embracing that change and lifting some really heavy new curriculum changes last year. This year, we see an elevated experience already. So we're confident that we're going to see that inching up again on year two. If you look at some of our student achievement data where we've done big curriculum changes, year three and four, if you look at, say, middle school element, very middle school ELA, secondary math, some of those places that it seems like, I don't know, it's not official. But it seems like three and four is what our trend has been with our system where we've seen some of the higher peaks right away. But I expect to bring something to you this year too that shows that as well too.
Mike, does every school district in Michigan have a Director of Literacy?
They do not. Yeah. So just to be frank, when I was hired for this job, it was a value that we needed to get right. And we were supported by bringing in someone with expertise and I think it's made all the difference in the world.
I know we talked about response intervention, but this is not a new program. This has been in the works for how many years now? I think we're on 18 or 19, but we did a big reimagining of RTI six years ago when I came into this role and really built in that science of reading as its foundation. And so we made some adaptations at that time, but yeah, it's been here for a while. And we were one of the first districts to roll that program out when it first came out.
We have kids like eight to three-ish. So what can parents, grandparents, guardians, caretakers do to help support literacy for their kiddos in the community?
Well, you know the real answer, right? We're going to read to our kids. But there also are experiences. So some people don't have the confidence or maybe even the knowledge. Daughter, she's a nurse. She has three little kids. She says to me all the time, tell me what I'm supposed to do, mom, right? And I'd be like, sounds first, right? She's like, why? Just do it. But you sometimes have to provide opportunities. So bring them to the library and have them read to them if that's not your comfort level. You can buy gifts when it's birthdays and Christmas. I know Dr. Matthews does this and I've actually done it for him. Like, happy birthday, here's a book you have to read, right? And so you can provide opportunities that way. So you can't just assume that everybody has the ability, but you certainly can assume that they can provide opportunities for them. If you're in Rockford, you're a little fortunate to have local independent bookstore, library, book bus that you can, you know, bring your child to those things.
And we have resources for families. If they were ever in a spot where they wanted to reach out to us and say, how can we or could we get some books or what's, what is the kind of the best approach? We would be happy to be partners with them and talk about some good directions.
So do parents of Tier Three intervention kids partner with teachers to achieve some of that?
We have a whole communication plan that's set up with that. They have an individual reading plan that the parents have a copy of. It's similar to like a 504 or an IP, it's a legal document. It's just a partnership document. And then they have updated reports from the interventionists and the classroom teacher several times a year. And if they enter or exit, that's a big communication as well. A lot of celebration. But these interventionists that are part of the response intervention program, they're trained in, with our PLCs, correct? So like the way that we implement curriculum, they know all those processes.
Yeah. So we're using, I'm going back to that idea like research-based practices. We're using targeted interventions that are proven pieces. You know, we recently got a grant from the state of Michigan around literacy. We spent that grant to get a targeted, to buy a targeted intervention package, its own curriculum. We train the people in that package. It has this need as identified by NWEA or DIBELS and we give that person that revenue.
I just wanted to say that it's easy to see the work that's going into motivating kids in reading. My son who has ADHD, he's kind of a squirrel and he's doing Battle of the Books this year. He's a fifth grader and like that just, that just speaks volumes for what is happening in the classroom. And so I know that you guys are doing an amazing job.
Again, at the end of the year, happy to bring some more information or anything around any other content area at any time. Make a great report. Thank you very much.
All right. Up next, item four, Collaborative Team Report. Second, please.
Thank you. Tonight, our elementary report will be from Rachel DeKeiper, who is the principal at Belmont Elementary.
All right. Well, thank you to Dr. Matthews and the entire board for a chance to share a little window into the life of an elementary school in the month of December. It is the most wonderful time of year. The energy and excitement and joy up and down our hallways is contagious. So we are partly trying to harness that energy for good and also make sure that we're attacking some of the curriculum issues at hand. So several of our elementaries had the opportunity to do a holiday performance up at RHS. If you've been to any of those, you know that they never disappoint. It will leave you singing Snow Pants, Snow Pants, Warm and Snuggly Snow Pants for months afterwards. So Belmont actually did not, does not have a holiday concert this year. We have a spring concert. We started rotating that schedule a little bit beneath the demands in the district for that auditorium. So half of our elementaries do holiday programs and half do spring programs. But regardless of what time of year, our students certainly enjoy the experience and it's wonderful way to bring families together. Speaking of the holidays, our students are young philanthropists. They are participating in Toys for Tots and Angel Tree collections at many of our buildings. Our student council leaders are all in on this. There is nothing they like more than doing the morning announcements and giving updates. My student council leader went a little rogue on me and offered to become a dancing Christmas tree if our school meets its goal. So that will be super exciting to see next week. Additionally, we have just tremendous parent-teacher organizations for our schools. Many of our PTOs have put on Santa shops for students to shop for gifts for their families. Others have hosted holiday crafting events where our kids come down. They participate in making something special for their family members. And like I said, harnessing that joy becomes a lot easier when we give them engaging opportunities such as that and the opportunity to make memories with their school community. A couple of other things that we are super excited about that are unique to each of our buildings. Lakes had another successful hatching of salmon. I don't know what all that entails, but there were a lot of exclamation points after that from Mr. Zoko. There was a poetry slam at Meadowridge, which I wish I could have attended. A recycling challenge at Roguewood that ended with some people getting slimed as they reached their goals. And then when I left my building this afternoon, two student-led clubs were wrapping up. The Pokemon Club, which was busy making a Pikachu Cootie Cutter thing. And the Belmont Cheer Club, which was rattling off high V, low V, T in box at a very high pitched and loud level. So lots of great opportunities in our district beyond just those curriculum things that we hear, heard so much about from Mr. Ram and Sharon Wells. With that said, in addition to all these fun experiences, our students are really embracing the idea of being Rams. Our acronym is respectful, accountable, motivated, and safe. We've spent a lot of time this school year teaching what that means in all different areas of our school building, whether it's on the playground, in the bathroom, in the cafeteria, in our hallways, in our buses, and obviously in our classrooms. So we want our kids to be respectful, accountable, motivated, and safe all the time. And so making sure that we're explicitly teaching those things is really important for our kiddos and it really pays off in the classroom. I know some of our kids are like, Mrs. D, we're doing a kindness challenge. I've been getting mints. I didn't know if they were telling me something like, here's a mint, Mrs. D. But it was part of a kindness challenge. So I learned very quickly to not take that personally as I had a pocket full of mints by the end of the day today. Additionally, teachers continue to really appreciate those early release PLC days. You heard Mike and Sharon talk a lot about PLCs and taking the time to look at student data and make instructional shifts and plan interventions and extensions. Those don't happen in isolation and we really appreciate the time that we have to do that. We've committed to common planning time as well. Our students are benefiting from us living the encroo cycle and challenging each other to always make decisions that are in their best interests. And in January, we have the opportunity to take a mid-year benchmark assessment and look at student growth. We know these kids by names. They're not just numbers on the screen as Mike and Sharon shared with you. They're students. They have names. And we are doing our best to move them academically and grow them in all aspects of their student life. So with all that said, I just want to say thank you to the Board of Ed. I'll take a question before I say thank you.
I think I do this every December, but please extend our gratitude to the elementary music teachers.
Oh, my goodness.
We know the importance of music education in neuroscience, but also what goes into those holiday programs is remarkable. I am blown away every year by the choreographed movements and the quality of singing and it's just so impressive.
It's not just about the music. It's the whole show. And our students walk away feeling like they participated in a really high-quality performance. So it doesn't matter if you think you can sing or not. They're all, they all do a great job on that stage. So thank you for recognizing that and I will pass it along for sure. But thank you. We are grateful for you. We know that you guys are presented with some tough decisions every month and we appreciate all you do for our students and we wish you a really wonderful holiday season. So thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
And our secondary report is from Jenny Thompson, our administrator at River Valley Academy.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews, members of the board and central office. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here to speak about some of the amazing things that are happening in our secondary schools. Starting with middle school updates, when we return from break, students will be taking the second round of NWEA assessments, as you've heard a little bit about, for the 25, 26 school year, marking the midway point of teaching and learning for the year coming up already. From there, we'll be running our secondary screeners, which include DIBELS in reading and Ames Web for Math. And these tests help to identify Tier Two and Tier Three, as you've heard some about tonight. The upcoming PAC meeting on Thursday here at Central Office will be focused on student behavior trends at the middle school as well as looking ahead to next year with Curriculum Night. Videos have been posted for parents to meet teachers and understand the scope of each class. At North, we heard a little bit about Toys for Tots at the elementary level, but North is also collecting. People can drop off new unwrapped toys until December 15. And then North- People can drop off new unwrapped toys until December 15, and then North becomes a distribution center for all of Northern County on December 20. Also, there is a pretty exciting play happening with the Drama Club at North, starting tonight. It's called Head Elf. At the Freshman Center, they celebrated 144 students with perfect or near-perfect attendance for try one, and these students got a cupcake to celebrate. Students with perfect attendance also received a formal certificate. Also, at the Freshman Center, they took advantage of the first flex session for trimester two by offering many enrichment opportunities for staff and students to connect. And Dr. Amche had a great time meeting students for donuts and conversation and learning more about the student experience at the Freshman Center. At the 1012 Building, RHS continues to have speakers from the community during flex time to connect students with the college and career goals that we have in our Rams 12. Our team is currently excited to be building different CTE pathways in order to grow our goal of more opportunities for students to earn college credit and certifications at RHS. So more information to come on that. And the collage concert takes place this week as the RHS Band, Orchestra, and Choir collaborate for a unique, and I'm told surprising, holiday concert. So encouragement to attend that. This year at River Valley Academy, we have shifted our focus to helping students graduate career and college-ready. As a part of that process, students have been taking interest and aptitude tests, and they've researched careers of interest. And that information was compiled and used to select guest speakers from the community to come and share about opportunities as well as their personal career paths. Last week, we had a graphic designer come in during our RAM time, and interested students stayed and had lunch with her and got their questions answered. Other visitors have included the National Guard, Rachel Ruiz from Wood TV8, and a team member from Macatawabank came in. In January, we're going to have representatives from the construction trade come in and speak about opportunities there as well. In November, River Valley students participated in a Discover Manufacturing Week observance with Kent ISD, and we visited Old Orchard Juice Factory in Sparta, and students got to see the giant containers of juice concentrate, couple stories tall. They got to see batch mixing, testing, freezing, packing, and loading all in real time. I think some of the boys were really interested in the forklifts that we were dodging as they were loading and unloading and beeping. But yeah, it was really a great adventure. Because it was a food processing plant, we had to be all geared up, so we wore hairnets and vests and safety glasses and long pants and closed-toe shoes and all of that. So it was, it was a great experience. RBA students also got to enjoy a homemade Thanksgiving dinner donated and prepared by our own community services and River Valley staff. And tomorrow, as a part of our College and Career Ready program, we're headed to Grand Rapids Community College to do a little college visit. Rockford Adult Education has partnered with Burn for the last nine years. I've spoken a little bit about that over the times that I've been in. We did open a new site last year at the Burn Lakeview location with our own retired principal, Larry Waters, as their teacher. So that's a great connection there. And so just on behalf of our busy secondary schools, we're not quite as busy as the elementary this time of year, but there's still a lot of excitement and a lot of enthusiasm to foster in the right direction. But I want to thank each of you for all that you do to support the secondary schools in Rockford. You truly make a difference with what you do for us and enable us to, to do what we can to improve the lives of our students. So thank you for that. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Thompson?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to superintendent evaluation report. So I'll just share brief remarks, as is mentioned. Evaluating the superintendent is a core responsibility of the board. We take it seriously. Earlier this afternoon, the board convened to complete the superintendent's annual performance evaluation. As explicitly granted in the Open Meetings Act, the superintendent has the right to hear feedback in closed session, and Dr. Matthews elected for that. I'm pleased to share the board adopted the completed evaluation with an overall performance rating of effective, which is the highest rating according to the MASB research-based rubric. As evidenced by the evaluation, Rockford Public Schools, under Dr. Matthews' leadership, continues to excel and move forward in a positive direction. Our community has every reason to take great pride in Rockford Public Schools and the dedicated staff who make it possible. The board thanks Dr. Matthews and the entire Rockford Public Schools team. I also want to thank Kelly, our HR committee chair, for helping us organize our review process again this year. I want to thank each of the trustees for diligently completing the rubric and providing your, your feedback. And then I want to thank Dr. Wilson Crawford for your expertise and guidance as well. So thanks, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Matthews. Thank you. And then we're on to recognition of visitors. Steven's going to help us with the timer on his phone, I think, right? Let me take a moment to outline our guidelines for public comment. First and foremost, we value and welcome your input and feedback. We believe a collaborative relationship between our schools and the Rockford community is essential to achieving our shared goals. Public comment at the board meeting is intended to give the Rockford community an opportunity to address the board on issues in the Rockford Public Schools. At our meetings, the board and individual board members will not directly respond to comments or questions that arise during public comment, but may follow up through the superintendent. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes to ensure everyone has an equal chance to express their views. Please be respectful and avoid using inappropriate language or engaging in personal attacks. We want to create an environment where everyone feels comfortable expressing their opinions without fear of retribution or harassment. To ensure due process and respect for individual rights, the district maintains a formal process for handling complaints against individuals. If you have a problem involving an individual or a specific incident, we encourage you to consider addressing it through administrative channels by contacting the superintendent's office. Furthermore, we ask that speakers express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it is not our intent to stifle public comment, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the legal ramifications of what you're about to say, we urge you to consult first with your legal advisor. We encourage you to provide constructive feedback and suggestions for improvement, which helps us improve our schools and better serve our students, families, and community. We thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts. We look forward to working together to ensure that our schools continue to be a source of pride for our community. Lastly, please remember that public comment at our board meetings is one way we hear feedback from the community. It is certainly not the only way. Those who prefer other means to communicate often do so via email through the website or by calling the superintendent's office. When we call your name, please step up to the podium and be mindful of the timer, which Steven will have next to you there. Speakers are asked to address the board, not the audience or others in attendance. The audience is asked to remain quiet so speakers may be heard without interruption. Thank you for that. We have five folks who signed up to speak tonight, starting with Jonathan Minor. You're up first.
Good evening. It's sure nice to hear a lot, all that about science of reading. I think that's an important effort. I saw an article in The Squire from Michelle Keim proposing a Rockford Reads program in area elementary schools, and I'm speaking in support of that. I worked at Bissell for 19 years, and back then, Bissell adopted Stocking Elementary School. And one of the ways that the company helped that school was to encourage employees to volunteer their time to read with second graders. And I read with second graders for several years and really enjoyed it. These weekly sessions gave the students time to talk to an adult and work on reading without distraction or performance anxiety about reading in the classroom. My favorite was a young guy named Marcos. He was a shy, quiet kid and a slow reader, but he really enjoyed reading. In this setting, he could take his time, ask me for help with words. He could work on special assignments that the teacher had crafted for him, and it just feel good about his reading. After I retired, I volunteered at the United Way and read with students at Harrison Park Elementary. Reading with kids was good for me, too. My kids were all grown by then, and I really miss being around young children. And it made me feel like I was contributing in a meaningful way. So I hope the Rockford Reads program gets approved, and I hope it can be incorporated nicely in the science reading program, and I look forward to participating. Thank you.
Up next is Jamie Williams.
Thank you for giving me the time to speak. Tonight, I'm here because a Rockford public school student told school staff they were having suicidal thoughts, and the adults responsible for their safety did not follow the most basic steps required under district policy and Michigan law. I want you to hear that again. A child said they wanted to harm themselves, and nothing they should have happened, happened. Michigan law is clear. School districts have a duty of care to protect students from foreseeable harm. A student expressing suicidal thoughts is the most foreseeable harm imaginable. Under Michigan's education code and mental health statutes, when a minor discloses suicidal ideation, school staff are required to take a mediable, immediate documented action. That includes contacting parents, engaging mental health professionals, and taking steps to ensure the child is not left alone or unsupported. But in this case, that didn't happen. Your district's suicide intervention process says under no circumstances is a suicidal student to be left alone. Staff must stabilize the situation, assess risk, and notify mental health personnel and begin the appropriate risk level procedures. None of that was done. Your threat assessment intervention guidelines says suicidal thoughts are considered concerning communications that require immediate action, documentation, and a formal risk classification. Again, none of that was done. A school cannot ignore its own policies when a student is in crisis. It's not just a procedural error, it's a danger to human life. Beyond policy, beyond law, a young person scared, overwhelmed, hurting, did something incredibly brave. They told an adult the truth, and the adult did not act. Please imagine that child for a moment. Imagine what it took for them to speak up. Imagine the trust they placed in the school, and imagine how it felt when nothing happened afterward. This isn't about paperwork. This is about a child who could have lost their life. And in Michigan, we have buried too many children because cries for help were not taken seriously. I'm asking for these things. An explanation of why the Rockford Public Schools policies were not followed. Why mandatory suicide response and threat assessment training for all staff is not available, and why, why we shouldn't have it. An action plan guaranteeing that future disclosures of suicidal thoughts trigger immediate assessments, and a commitment that this district will never again leave a child unsupported after expressing suicidal intent. I don't feel like these are extreme, extreme requests. These are the basics of protecting children in Michigan schools. I want to end with this. Students do not always tell adults when they are hurting, but they do tell us when they reach out. Our response can be the difference between life and death. This district already has policies, but policies only protect children when they are followed. I'm asking you to ensure that they are. Thank you for listening, and I look forward to your actions on this matter.
Thank you. Up next is Michelle Keim.
Hi. I had the pleasure of visiting Valley View and meeting with Mike Ram and Sharon Wells last week in regards to our reading literacy rates. It was a wonderful two-and-a-half hour visit, and I left that meeting with the confidence that we have people in our schools who are intelligent, informed, and deeply care about our children. The fact remains, however, that our reading comprehension is below what I regard as adequate. Although I haven't seen individual student data, Sharon and Mike assure me that individual results, results from those going through Tier Three RTI program are strong and positive. The question is, do we have the right children selected for the program and at the right times? The Mstep data from 2015 through present day, which is the printout that you have, shows that the number of children below proficient and not proficient has not improved over that time period. FYI, I don't have a color printer, so I labeled each one of your handouts. Over the past month, I have asked the community to get involved to support our children, and the response has been beyond my expectations. I have a list of nearly 30 volunteers, and about 75% of them are former educators and some are ex-RPS employees, who are all ready to volunteer inside our schools. Sharon, Mike, and I are working together to form a plan that will best utilize these volunteers to improve our literacy. My background personally is in business, and I know that what gets measured gets done. And we are all here aware of SMART goals. It's important that goals be specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound. My proposal is that the district adopt a 90% third-grade literacy rate as measured by the Mstep within a five-year period, and I propose that it be led by Dr. Matthews and that the district discuss this metric at least quarterly in the board meeting so as to be a community-facing transparent metric. I argue that there is no more important metric than our third-grade reading proficiency. We all know this. 74% of children who pass into fourth grade without proficiency will never catch up. My request to the district is for anonymous student-level data to track the children or cohorts who tested below proficiency beginning in 2012 all the way through the end of their educational career at RPS. This way, we can see if we have the winning formula that puts a majority of our students in the 26% of success stories, or if there's something more that we need to be doing. To summarize, I propose next steps as follows. One, student data is specified and detailed in an email sent to Sharon and Mike. Two, a district-wide 90% third-grade literacy rate metric owned and reported by Dr. Matthews quarterly in the board meeting or more often. And three, continued expedient collaboration between myself and the district to put our volunteers at work, potentially expanding the Tier Three RTI program. With three seconds left. Thank you very much.
Up next is Deborah Novak.
Hello. Okay, thank you for the draft agenda on Friday and the packet earlier on Monday. I appreciate it. It's a good start to working together. I'm a month late to comment on the bond, but I couldn't attend last month, so, okay, I can see it. I had very much mixed feelings about the bond, and I still do. On the one hand, I'm sad it didn't pass. The AC, Security and Technology, I feel would have passed if separated into their own bond, but we were given an all-or-nothing choice. Times are changing, and I think the bond request may have to change also. On the other hand, I am glad it didn't pass because I feel there were wants listed. It would be nice to have the wants, but maybe we need to get some of the needs taken care of first, especially if the school district has decreasing enrollment. Back in the late 1990s, I asked administration when Valley View would get some relief from the extra-large classes and the additions of portables to removable. And I was told the school district could afford to build a new school, but they could not afford to run it. I was told that bond money is for B, for building and construction, but not to run it or staff it after it was completed. In 1994, Rockford was only one of two school districts that had a BAC program. Rockford was the school district to be in, but over times, others have improved. I've tried to make an analogy that would be appropriate, so hopefully this makes sense. So Lane Kiffin was the Ole Miss football coach, and he built a team that is in the college football playoffs for the first time in school history. But that wasn't good enough for him. He left for LSU because that school's last three out of four coaches had won national championships, and LSU has a much larger budget than Ole Miss. Is Rockford a great school district? Absolutely. Does it support its students and athletes? Yes. But during the past 30 years, the other surrounding districts have also grown and improved, and now have they surpassed Rockford financially. So I ask, I hope in your research for future requests that the community is involved. I know you said the community was, but it seemed if you weren't a parent with kids in the system, or if you weren't in the Lions or Rotary or PTO, if you weren't connected to some inner circle, you were left out. But every homeowner pays the tax, so every homeowner should have the opportunity to be heard. I know you were keeping the mills at seven, so there would be no increase in the number of mills. If it had passed, would this be the norm going forward every time? Because I didn't think that's the way it would work. Or why can't we vote to move mills to sinking fund? Lots of thoughts. I hope the school, parents, and the community can agree on a plan going forward. Thank you.
Okay, last night is Dwayne Grider.
I've got just a few items I want to speak about tonight. First and foremost, I'm a little disappointed in the board giving your superintendent the highest ranking possible. We've got a superintendent in front of us tonight that just went through a bond issue that was probably one of the biggest failures this community has ever given to you, the board. Seventy, excuse me, 60, 40. And yet you give him an excellent rating? Typically, when we have people that fail at something, we make Typically, when we have people that fail at something, we may say they've done a good job, but there's room for improvement. You guys have said, no, this man has done a perfect job. There is no room for improvement. You've given the highest grade. I'm very disappointed in that. Currently, I'm looking forward to a very lively 2026. I know many of you people on the board have been seeing here for over five years, but hopefully, I hope you guys have actually paid attention to what took place in November. The community is very disappointed, the lack of transparency, that's one of the main issues, and your policy issues. Fortunately, the community is coming on board to many things I've been bringing to you for nearly five years now. You guys have policies here that restrict the community from taking part that no other school in the state of Michigan has. That, to me, is appalling and I think this community needs to speak out to that. Beyond that, hopefully you guys have learned your lesson. Hopefully you'll work with the community and hopefully those policies will be changed. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on then to superintendent remarks. Dr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. We appreciate the community of members who are paying attention to our reading instructional program and our reading scores. As we move forward, I'm sure that Mr. Ram will work to evaluate the ideas of bringing in our community members to support our students. It requires us to ensure that all volunteers are vetted and that the process will benefit our students. As mentioned this evening, the evidence that we have is that our students perform at the 90th percentile on the NWA. As mentioned, the Mstep is not a true measure of reading, but a measure of reading, writing, speaking and listening. We report our NWA scores regularly to the board and will continue to do so. Mental health of our students is a high priority. I appreciate Ms. Williams coming tonight to address the board. What she addressed is clearly concerning to us. Ms. Williams has reached out to our staff and to me and I have responded to her in an email and I have communicated to our staff as well. We'll follow up with her to make sure that we are providing the support needed to support every student. And I think all of us agree that we must work together to support our students and our families. I, too, appreciate the effort that our fine arts teachers give during this time of year. Concerts from elementary through high school dominate from Thanksgiving through Christmas. The effort these teachers give is noticed and greatly appreciated. As was mentioned this evening, our policy committee is reviewing several items related to our board meetings. Start times, when public comments will be, the posting of agendas and material. But it's important to note that while the formal decisions are made at the board meetings, there is a lot of preparation that goes into forming the basis for that decision. Information shared at committee meetings and then with the whole board. I share information via conversations and emails with board members. Community members email thoughts and concerns as well. Rarely is a decision made at a board meeting that has not had a thorough vetting before the board meeting makes the decision. I appreciate the board's care in evaluating my performance over the course of the last year. There are several domains and several indicators that the board looks at. Appreciate the time the board took in reviewing those domains and these indicators. There are several positives over the course of this last year. Student achievement, school culture, collaboration among staff, our audit and finances, among others, are all positive. The bond clearly was not a positive outcome and I take responsibility for that. We're beginning our effort to reach out to our community again, as we did in the two years preceding that bond vote, and we will identify a way forward. Taken together, I feel that this was, again, a very good year for a district. But tonight, I appreciate the feedback that the board has given to me and my goal is to continue to reflect and find ways to improve and to continue to lead in a positive manner. So I appreciate the feedback that the board has given. I also want to remind our community and our students that winter is upon us and with winter comes the possibility of snow days. Ms. Clemens and Kyle Foreman, who's a mechanic in our transportation department and who drives our roads in the morning and helps participate with Ms. Clemens and I in evaluating the conditions and providing insight to me into what decision I should make. I also appreciate all the feedback that students provide as we try to keep everyone safe. They have strong opinions on this subject. It's a responsibility that I take seriously. I just want to remind our community that, that I try and make the best decision possible. Hopefully, most times I'll get it right, but sometimes I won't. And so the key word for winter is patience. And finally, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a wonderful holiday season. We have a strong start to the school year. Our staff continues to focus on meeting the needs of our students and providing high-quality service to our community. And I want to express my thanks to our staff for all that they do every day to support our students and each other. And I also want to thank our community for the support that you provide our students and our staff. This time of year makes us think through and think about the many blessings that we have. And one of the blessings in my life is being a part of this community and this school district. So I would wish everyone a joyous and happy holiday season. And that's my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. That's it, we're adjourned.